Calling me to order at 6 o'clock on November 5th. That's in the highway report. Welcome, everybody. Just so that everybody understands that there is a vote today. Half of you unanimous, because we're voting for the present. So that is the rules.
You do have four.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, we have Alan. So it's four. I forgot about you. Alan, I forgot about you. This is not normal to have a telephone in a meeting. But I'm glad you're here. Okay, we need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, okay. With one exception, there's no executive session tonight. I'm gonna change. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You a favor, Alan?
Aye.
Okay. A motion to approve the minutes of October 15th. Are there any additions or corrections?
Tell Bill Currie he misspelled my name again.
Which one, Al or Sam?
They're both very difficult. I'll find it. Thank you, Al.
Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Alan, you a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the warrants.
There aren't any warrants.
That's right.
As they were just finished today.
Right.
They're there for you to sign.
Okay, warrants will be signed. Danny, highway report?
Yeah, the discussion for the EJD pipeline. But I don't know if Bill found out any information on that.
No, he did not.
I would suggest that we just forget that. It was...
Let me just say, I think we have two issues with this. One is that Danny's belief is that if you accept the bid before the grant, there's a possibility that the grant, you're not eligible for the grant. The second issue is, I think it was a little misunderstanding. It was never put out the bid, it was just an estimate. So since it's $60,000,000, I think we, even though there might not be many bidders, I think we have to go through the motions. So I think what we need tonight, though, is to, do we need to accept, do it tonight? I don't think we have to do it.
No, I don't think so.
We cannot accept the bid.
No, no, I understand. We don't have to make a motion to fix it at this point in time.
No, there is now, it's no, there's nothing pressing as far as time. The pressing was, in order to hold that, I thought it had been out the bid. I thought this was a good bid. In order to hold that price that is already fairly old, he wanted to know by the end, by the middle of this month. Since we're not going to do any of that, there's nothing pressing. We could just pass this or just drop it.
Is that okay with the board?
I'm just leaving. Not really doing anything with it right now.
Table it.
No, I wouldn't table it. I would take it, I would just...
Say, not deal with it.
Not deal with it.
They don't need to do nothing with it.
Because I don't want to carry it.
Are you okay with that, Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. When is the grant? What grant are you talking about?
Better Back Roads Grant that we applied for, $60,000. But if you sign an agreement before the grants are awarded, pretty sure you get rejected.
We believe that to be the fact. And we called the state today, but they didn't return the call.
But every time you do grants, you just get estimates on what it would do to fill out your paperwork. Bill was on the incentive, it was already a bid, but it was not a bid. It's just a price to fill out grant paper that we did last year, too.
Alan, do you have any statement?
Yes. I was making...
The grant, well, Alan?
Yeah, I'm listening.
Okay.
The grant is still applied for, and we'll know in the spring whether or not we can. At that point in time, we would send it out to bid.
Right, correct.
I understand. That sounds reasonable.
All righty, so we'll just ignore the culprit. Danny, any other issues you have?
No, we're just getting things ready for winter. Just hauling some sand in. We've got some roads that's still smoothed up. Just get ready for winter. Blow some more leaves if it ever dries out enough to do so.
Okay. Any questions, Danny? You want to move on? The next item is the letters to the governor. Let me do a little explanation about this. I don't know how you know of what happened in the school that were denied their request for the organization. I talked to, at Banks, it's a little, he thought it was a little too premature because then he was waiting for the election to see if, who got elected and if the house would change or whether Carolyn or Parker would get reelected or whatever. So my thought was, and I just wanted approval, is that it's a school board issue, correct, but this really goes farther. It's really a town issue or something to happen around school. And under the guidance of what he thinks is going to happen, we would, the school would be no longer owned by the town. It would be owned by the unit, the SEU, I guess. And, but as I understand, and this is not cut and dried because nobody really knows what's going to happen, but his thought is that there would be two members from Brafton on the board, there would be two members from Athens on the board, and two members from Westminster on the board. And the school board, as we know it now, would be discontinued one year after the date. So I think it's a serious issue. And I think that whoever gets elected, I think the select board should write a letter, with your approval of the board, obviously, to the governor and explain to them that this is a disaster. This goes contrary to what the state's trying to do and what they, with trying to rebuild small towns. And this takes the small town, it makes it hard because you have a situation where you could close the school or you might be transporting kids. You know, which is not help what's going to happen. So I was just looking for an okay for us to, once we understand what's going on. And then Banks will probably come into a board meeting, maybe next one. But I'd like permission to start to work on a bill, a letter that could be sent to the governor and have our representatives. Do you have any objection to that?
I don't have any.
Do you want to go through the school board first?
Well, I think let them do their thing. We do all of it. I mean, why not get more pressure on the, you know, from the state?
I think you do need to have more information.
Yes.
And I know that they're having a board meeting this Thursday.
Correct.
One of us or all of us should attend. Maybe one of us should attend, just to get the information.
Yeah, I'm not here. I'll go over there. So if there's no objection, when the time comes, we'll draft a letter for the board's approval. But I think it's a very important issue for the town. And the people should be cognizant of what might take place. Village Park and VAST, let me get a little background. Forever and ever and ever, the VAST has been using the trails of the park. This is nothing new. But I know that Jane Gregory came to me and Amber that since they were redoing the park and everything else, they were, they like to make sure that there's no further objection. But it's not a new item. And they've been always using these trails to go into the ball field and the tavern. Amber's here, so she might be able to explain to you.
Well, I printed off the map to show you. I drew again where the VAST used.
Yeah, I got one too.
Oh, I'll give you two. So you can see where the black line is where the VAST put trails and turned. So we're just asking permission to continue using that trail to go down towards the ball field, the tavern area, and then turn around and head back out that same direction. That's pretty much it. I mean, we're pretty much just asking to continue doing what we normally do, which is ruin the trail. So anybody that wants to hike can hike on it. Anybody wants a snowshoe, catch me if you ski, anything like that, then we're welcome to use that trail as well.
Where's the VAST trail?
The VAST trail is this black one.
I guess we need a motion to let VAST use the trail. I think that's what we're hoping.
Yeah. And there's a landowner permission form that the town would have to sign just to make sure that there's, to cover yourself with liability issues where if somebody got hurt that was on a snowmobile and tried to sue the town because they're on your property, VAST would cover any of the issues.
I think $5 million, isn't it?
It's $1 million.
$5 million?
Yeah.
$5 million.
Well, I make the motion that they keep the trail.
Bill?
And to execute the, authorize Joe to execute the agreement for a landowner for VAST to use the trail, which gives the landowner protection. It's not just, it's not just giving them permission. It gives landowner protection through their insurance.
Will you amend your motion to do so?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yes, that's right.
Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Do you have any others sign this now? The next is the logging and Bell Road update.
I think he had, I think Alan may have more on the park. I have it up there. This is his email for notes if somebody wants to read them. Now, I just have your notes up on the village park. You talk about what needs to be done for invasives and the hazard trees.
Yeah, if you could read it, it's kind of, I don't know how well you can hear me, but it's very choppy from what you can hear.
We hear you loud and clear. Too loud and clear. So go ahead. No, you go ahead.
No, I said, I sent you the email. You just want to read it to them.
Okay. Hayden's invasive work in the park looks good. He has contacted that guild to arrange the hazard tree work we authorized at the village park meeting. Another group was represented, the Grafton Outing Club. And then you talk about VAST and how the trail serves getting people into town to go to different places in town.
No questions, Alan, so...
Okay, good. That's fine. You're sharing information.
Okay. All right, so go ahead.
So do you want to talk about the Bell property logging, too? Or is that going to be another item?
No, do it now.
Good. Same sort of thing. Bill can leave my comments if you want. Or I can give up to you.
Oh, I just, let me just read him. "I walked the sale Thursday in the rain. Water bars were in place. Sale has been shut down until Hayden gives okay to resume. Cutting is complete. A few more days is getting needed. Residual damage is minimum since nice oak left for future sale. Only initial payment has been received by Kim." And we should receive the payment shortly. And I just report that they were skidding and moving logs today down at the, next to the road.
What was it?
You referred to Bell Road and said Bell. But I think it should be called the Stebbins Land. That's where we got it from. It's the Stebbins family.
Okay. So it's duly noted that it'll be the Stebbins lot, I guess, right? Is that okay, anyone else?
Aye, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any questions about the logging or whatever? Okay, next item, we'll move on. The next item is the VTAL situation where when there's a power outage, the phone service only lasts for eight hours. I was asked to put it on the agenda from Kent Armstrong. We did a little research. Bill did some stuff today, sent out an email. So so everybody understands, if you have a power outage and you don't have a generator, then your landline will only last eight hours unless you either get additional batteries or some kind of generator or some other solar powered device. Okay? May I speak on this? Sure. Go ahead. Basically, this is the box you have in your, somewhere in your house. It's an 8A box. Unless you're willing to upgrade it to something incredibly big, this will last eight hours if you don't lose your phone. The moment you start using your phone, it eats up this time exponentially. I used it for four phone calls on Saturday night. After five hours, my phone was dead. And that's the hard line. That's not your radio phone, nothing else. You are also responsible for maintaining this battery. You are also, it's all you. They, VTAL's done a great job of giving it over to everybody else. Here's the battery. It's about a small motorcycle battery, twelve volt battery. We have a life safety issue, not only which our town, but every other town that VTAL services for fiber optics. I approached VTAL and they said, well, you've got faster internet now. I go, and how does that negate the life safety aspect? If you have lifelines, if your house is on fire, if you're having a medical incident, your phone is dead. You have no communication unless, as said, you either have a battery backup system that's bigger, you have a generator. We're screwed. And just Saturday night, ProTels, for five hours, I had no way of communicating the outside world because my system was already dead after four phone calls. So I've actually contacted, I've passed the town. I've already been in touch with the, I've been in touch with the state to find out who regulates this. And it's the FCC. The FCC is the one that gave out the permissions. I've already started, you guys want a copy of this to see if it works? We need to contact the FCC. I've already started the process. We need to get all the towns together. Because this is a situation that's going to get worse. I mean, we're going to have a death. We're going to have a house on the ground because nobody can make a phone call. And this is something the towns need to get together with and approach the FCC and tell them this system's no good. And this system is, they have given no responsibility for this. We now, we have to maintain everything now. I don't know what VTAL is providing us anymore. They now also charge you an extra $70 a month for the use of your... Yeah, both of them. Which you can buy for $70. You can buy a line for $70. You'll pay for it the first year. They're going to charge you $84 a year. You can buy it for $70. You can afford to replace it every year and still save yourself $14. This whole system. And so the state is not happy about this. They're really not happy about it. But because it's over their heads, they'll back us. They'll actually back anything we want to say to the FCC. So if we can get the state to come in and say we agree with what's going on. But this situation is, there's going to be a death or there's going to be a situation where somebody's not going to be able to communicate. And this is, like I say, if you use this battery, like I said, I mean, four phone calls came into me to try to not use it. And after five hours, mine was dead. And these batteries are on a downward curve from the day they're put in. They say they'll last 10 years. Well, I can tell you right now, they might last 10 years and they might not. And like I say, you've got eight hours. So they said you could either put in a bigger battery into your system. You could put a car, this is a 12 volt battery. You put a car battery in. I've lost power for over a week in my house. Now, if you add up all those hours, even a car battery would not be big enough to power my system for a week because it's only 60 A hours. It would last me two and a half days. So how many batteries do we have to have in our homes to power for a week? But as we see, we've had two incidents. I did write the graphic news a few months ago. But we've had two incidences just recently. And the outage we had on Saturday night affected seven villages. And they were all in the exact same situation if you don't have battery backup or anything else. So I think the select board needs to draft a letter along with all the other boards that are affected by this and get it into the FCC. Because as you read my letter, they just don't quite grasp the fact that you've got better internet, but who cares about whether you live or die or your house goes on the ground? Thank you, folks.
Yeah, I just want to address it for a safety issue. So right now, we're not going to do anything with VTAL. But Kent showed you, Kent, is there more? Anything more on that?
This way, yeah, sure.
Kent showed you the deal. This plugs into your, if you go down and find here, this plugs into the wall. And it trickle charges this battery. It's something like all trickles charge batteries. This is going to give out, so you're going to watch the light with this. What you can do at the beginning, if you're on a generator, don't even listen to any of this, doesn't matter. Your phone's fine. If you're not on a generator, this will last seven or eight hours if you don't do anything. What you can do, if you know all your family's safety and you're not expecting any calls and you don't give a damn if you get any calls, take the battery out. Then if you do need to make an emergency call, you can put it back in and plug it all back in, put it back in. And then you've got to press, don't forget, you've got to press this button right here, this second button. It's called the cold start. And when you press it, then this light will eventually turn orange and then it'll be green, then it'll come back on. The other thing you can do for about $13 a piece is buy other batteries that back up, all rechargeable. And the, now, all this information's coming from VTAL. VTech, not from VTAL, but from the tech I've talked to at VTAL. You can buy three or four of these batteries so that you can change them out while you're waiting. And again, seven or eight hours is all you got in each one. Then at the end of the power outage, you can put it back in, charge it, take that one out, put another one in, charge it until you finally get back up, okay? The deal is that when we were on copper, they ran the generator that put power into the lines that kept everybody's phone going. And that's why I always have had a plug-in phone. Lock-on phones, forget, you know right away, you all know that. But a plug-in phone to the wall because it used to be good forever during the outage as long as the VTAL didn't lose power or whoever your server was. Now, what I sent out today also has the VTAL site showing you other batteries. The VTAL tech said they're very expensive. You can get them, but they're very expensive. And you can put them in a series so they last longer. But you have to remember, when you buy the battery, you're not done. You've got to buy the connector to put them all in a series. He didn't recommend that. You can also plug it into, he did not disagree that you could plug it into a bat, one of those power packs you carry to start your car into a bad situation that has a 110 volt thing. He didn't disagree you could plug it in there. It just wasn't something that he would recommend doing. He didn't seem to have a strong opinion in favor or against that. The whole idea is just keep the power going. But, and I guess, the other thing is, on that website that I sent out today, there is also a blurb about solar. I guess solar people command for the solar panel outside that feeds just that plug for that. So, I mean, that's possible, too. So those are the things. So just in the meantime, while we're waiting for a solution, if it's ever going to come, you've just got to know that when the power goes out, your phone has a limited life unless you do something. That's the main, that's the main thing to take away from it. Thanks for your...
And I would add to that, that he's given us some great ideas. But a lot of this is an old age community. We can't be doing this stuff. Most people don't know how to do this stuff. Basically, VTAL has put it upon ourselves to do this. Well, I mean, Joe, do you know where yours even is in your house? You know how to operate it?
Yes.
Good. But you say your phone...
It's very similar to if you have a security alarm, fire alarm in your house.
Yeah, it's basically the same battery, the same trickle charging thing. Right, right.
I didn't realize if someone came up, he said it only lasts eight hours. But I have generators, so for me, it's not a big deal.
And that's eight hours. And really, seriously, this is important. It's only eight hours if you don't use the phone. The moment you start using the phone, it's on a downhill curve, big time.
Yep. The select board have a preference that we continue to write to the FCC?
FCC.
FCC?
If all the other towns are doing it, yeah. They aren't taking much...
Perhaps maybe you would help us draft a letter and we will get it to whoever you recommend.
Yeah, and I'll send it out to all of the local towns and then you see what they think because this is a real bad situation. I mean, it's...
Well, I understand how it can be for people who live, you know, way out where there is no cell service and whatever. And obviously, everybody here who's lived here knows that there's ice storms and sometimes cows out three, four, five days. So that's an issue. Okay. Thank you. The next item is the town plan. The only issue here is that the select board was brought to the attention that perhaps the plan wasn't complete. So we contacted VLCT and we contacted Ron and Stern. And both said that if the maps are not complete, we should go forward with the public hearing. But that's really a planning commission issue to another select board at this point. So if they want to go forward, they go forward. But they run the risk of perhaps not having, having it won properly or having an issue. So just on the agenda for that reason.
So can I comment? So it's not really correct to say that the maps are not complete. The maps are complete. And that's why the planning commission thought that it would be perfectly okay to go ahead with the hearing. The maps are just not yet in the final form, which is basically a technicality. The WRC is finishing the maps to put them in a professional form. Nothing is going to change in the content of the maps. The maps exist as far as the content, as far as what they actually say. It's just that they don't, they're not yet in the technically final form. So that was a little bit misleading to say that the maps are not complete.
Well, this is really an issue. The planning commission decides what they want to do. But I put it on the agenda so that it would be, you know, so that they would know.
So the latest on this is, and I think most of you have seen those emails this afternoon, in that the planning commission is now trying to have a special meeting to make a decision. Obviously, not one person can make that decision alone. And so Dave is calling a special meeting to decide what to do. And that would have to be on Wednesday because on Thursday, the meeting needs to be posted. The agenda for next Tuesday needs to be posted. So that's where that is.
The only thing I saw today is that's a conflict because there's a DRB training session was planned, so I don't know...
Right. So my suggestion was, and I said that to people, to have the PC meeting just prior. Of course, that's going to be a short meeting, 15, 20 minutes. So we could have a PC meeting at 5:30 and then segue into the DRB meeting right after.
I just need to hear from the chair. I wrote him twice asking him. I've not heard back from him.
Okay. Well, whatever, just whatever you want to do, just have...
And I can post it in the morning, which will give you time.
Yeah, I'm sure you will hear from Dave.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion on this town plan? Any other discussion on this town plan? Budget calendar? We need another date to have another meeting. We had a meeting the other night, as we know. Now we need Danny's input for the road seat. So does anyone have any particular dates, Danny? You want to, you know, do this or what's your schedule?
Do it during the day or evening?
Would be next week, not this coming week, the week after next. Um, I'm.
The week of the 12th.
Yeah.
The 12th they have off. So the 13th, 14th.
You guys thinking evening?
No, I did, yeah.
Alan, what's your schedule the week of the 12th?
Evenings are good.
What about during the day or late in the afternoon? Or early?
Not so good.
Do you have any days that are good?
Evenings are good.
Why not during the day?
Well, I don't want to say, but Alan's got his recreation plan.
He's not out there through daylight, is he?
Ask Alan.
I am.
Alan, are you out there from noon to night?
Pretty much.
Could you take a couple of hours off one of these days?
If I have to.
Okay. But why don't we give some dates to Bill and something, I guess, unless you all know.
I can't the 15th.
I don't have my schedule.
And then the week after that, the CPAs are coming.
Yeah, right. So how about Bill sent out a couple of dates and everybody can kind of.
Can we do it right now?
I guess I can. I mean, I don't have my schedule.
You?
I already did.
I can't do the 15th, I have a training.
See, I have something going on today, so I don't know that.
The 14th, I have HR, but wait for it.
So why don't we do the 13th? What is that? What day is that?
That's Tuesday.
Okay, why don't we put, um.
How about doing it, how about, Al, how about doing it late afternoon as this? Because it's getting dark pretty quick. Say 3 o'clock on Tuesday?
We're probably dragging the deer in then.
You can drop the deer, just mark it.
You can bring it to town.
Bring it to town.
Okay.
No, 3 o'clock on Tuesday?
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Tuesday, the 13th.
The town hall.
Oh, yeah, what month?
Three?
Five.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I have a meeting, but I'll be done by that time. Water testing. Just, it's on the agenda just so that everybody will not forget about we have an issue with the water. And so I'm not sure where that is. Maybe you can fill us in, Bill, but.
They have, they've done an initial study by Bear Ter. I don't know what that means, Green Mountain. In a combination fringe. Anyway, Bear Ter is the name of the initial report. And they've done two houses on Pleasant Street, Mary Federis and the one next to it. The house right across the street from the school, the Red House to Millard House, Bonin and Ed and Kim's house. There have been nothing, no detection at all at Kim's house. Nine of the trillium from Michelle Cavanaugh's house to Millard House. Nothing much, if anything at all, at Mary Federis or the house next to it. But Bonin has 22, same as the school. All the, they have test wells all around the leach field. Those all show high, really high. And so I don't know where they're going. I got this report from Kimberly Caldwell last week. I tried to put it on the web, on the web, on our site. It's too big. I got to cut it into about three different pieces I'll put it on. The report itself's only 20 pages and or so. And that's the meat of it. The rest of it's all scientific stuff that, you know, the lab work and everything. It's 214 pages long. But what's important is about 16 pages long. And if I can get that copied onto, into a document of some form, I'll put that on the web. And then I can mail the whole report to anybody who wants it. And I've already done that to some, sent it to some people who have been interested. And Mrs. Martin wants to address that too. I know of no others, other than those five houses, I know of no other plan to test any other houses by the Department of Health.
Yes, I'm a homeowner on Keanu Road. And I think this report was issued on October 12th, which would have been plenty of time to let the public know what was going on as far as meeting the deadline for the Grafton News. And the Grafton News has nothing about it, only what was in the school board minutes, which comes up under unfinished business. And they report that the problem at the school has been mitigated with the use of carbon filters and all of that. No information about the cost of the carbon filters or whatnot. No information going out to anybody who was in a butter. I came hoping that Al Sands would be here tonight because I think.
Well, he is.
I know, he looks good. I think that he was involved with the building of the school in 1988. And also, at that time, there were butters whose wells were replaced under that hole. He said that you would know that as well because Libby Wilson's house was one of those houses that the well had been replaced. And why, at that point, were they replacing wells for butters? That's a question that a number of us just don't understand. And a number of us just don't understand why the public hasn't been getting informed. Not just, well, we selected a few houses on Pleasant Street. Bonin, who is right behind me and discharges a lot of things through my property besides this potential hazard here. He came up with a 22 score. I certainly would like my property tested as well.
Well, I think the Select Board shares some of the frustration because we have not really been kept fully at rest as well. I mean, we've reached out and we've phoned these things, but we don't really know what's going on. And to be very honest, the town is concerned about our water at the town hall, at the library, and here. And we are thinking of testing. The problem is, it's a $3,000 test for well. So that's a lot.
I'm sure that's in the minister.
That's a lot of money for the town. But it also is important because if there's water here that's being contaminated or at the library or at the town hall, then the potential for harm to, you know, the public is there. And I don't know if, and I don't know what, personally, Stan and I are, have been resurrecting the study, the sewer and water study. And we're meeting with the two companies that gave the proposal back in 2001 and 2009, I think, or seven, nine. And we don't know whether or not there's a problem throughout the whole village. And that's an issue. And at some point, if, I don't know how these wells are going to get tested, but, you know, the average homeowner can't spend $3,000 to get his well tested. So I think it's an issue. And I honestly, truly don't know how to solve it. But I know that it is an issue that I think we need to be very aware of.
Well, that's great. We're aware of a lot of things, but we don't do anything about it. And I think number one, you've got to keep these people who have these houses within close proximity of the elementary school informed. That's always true. And then this consulting company, or whoever they are, Goldchester also, why did they pick those particular houses? I mean, why, you know, what was the problem that is there and who got picked?
I don't know. This isn't really a question of the school board.
When you ask the school board, it's the same issue as the culvert that runs through our property. Oh, no, it's the foundation's issue. Oh, no, the foundation says it's the town's issue. We've all been through that, everybody's been through it. Until I just said, look, I don't care who owns this culvert, but I'm taking it out tomorrow. If none of you want, I'll own up to it. Well, it's the same thing with the drinking water. Somebody's got to own up to it. I mean, seriously, if this problem with the chemicals is stemming, where is it stemming from? Did it stem from the school? You already took care of that by indicating the school's issue. But what about the people who's only getting the runoff from the school? I think that that comes back to being, you know, the school's issue, not my issue. Personally, I didn't go out there and put something in my well. I never cleaned my floor, so it certainly wasn't a floor cleaning item, you know? I mean, none of those things happened in my house.
I understand, I have the same frustration, but we can't tell, the Select Board can't tell. Because I don't know, I don't know who can tell the school board. I guess the residents have to go to the meetings and speed up. But, I mean, the Select Board can't tell the Select Board, the school, what to do. But there is an issue. And I read one of the reports that the carbon filters that they installed at the school are only temporary. They're recommending that the school drill new wells. Well, I'll give you the example of Al Sands. If you have a cup of coffee that's contaminated and you change the straw, it's still going to be contaminated. So, and there's no place for them to drill more wells. So I don't quite understand why these carbon filters are not adequate. I mean, you could filter out iron, you could filter out gray iron, you could filter out a whole bunch of things. So I don't know the issue here, Phil.
But Ms. Martin, I just wanted to let you know that we feel the exact same frustration you do. I almost every day asked for information. And it was only because I asked for this report last week while I got back on Wednesday, so I had been on Thursday. It's only because I asked for it that I got it. They had been from Department of Health. I don't get anything from school. The school's just going to tell you whatever they think they want to tell you. I'm sorry to say that, but that is the case. They're not going to tell you anything. But, and the Department of Health is not much better. But I think Ken Caldwell, who I got it from, realizes that's a public report. They got to release it, it's a public report. The Department of Health at least knows that. If the town wants to do something, then the town's got to tell all the town. It's got to tell the Select Board, let's spend the money and test wells. If the Department of Health is going to. Then let us go after the Department of Health and the school, which is saying that, so let's not go after the school. Let's go after the Department of Health to find out why they are not testing the rest of these wells. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Especially when you find out in their pots right around the leach field that it's 600, 300, 900. I mean, just look at the report. I can't quote it because I don't remember, but it was in the hundreds. It wasn't 22 parts per trillion, it was in the hundreds per trillion. Why are they not testing it? I have no idea. And why are they not looking at our offer? Because if it's our offer, if we were to test this well and found stuff in there, then we know, we got a big problem. The fact that we didn't get anything over at the art thing over at Kim and Ed's might be because they're not as deep. They're not, may not be in the same water source. Who knows? I don't, no one knows.
No one knows. But I have to tell you that, I speak for the Select Board. We didn't know anything about this. It was posted, we all read it. I mean, the school board, then we had the courtesy to come to the Select Board and send what happened. We found out that by accident or by somebody meeting.
And we're pretty much told by the Select Board it was none of our business.
You mean the school board?
School board. By the school board, none of our business.
So it's very frustrating for us, believe me. But, you know, our authority is limited. You know, the school board's entity themselves. But it is a public issue. So unfortunately, you know, they're not communicating to the Select Board like they should be.
Well, I think we have some great community organizers sitting right here in our presence tonight who could actually bring this to the attention of WCAX and the governor's office and the whole bit without much warning.
I don't have any pressure to that, quite frankly.
Would this school, would this Select Board have the authority to get in touch with the Department of Health directly and ask them to come and give us an assessment of what's.
I don't know.
If you are our representatives and we are coming to the government at the time of Grafton to ask what's happening, then as our representatives, you should.
I think we should.
I think we probably could. I mean, I don't want to say it because I don't really know, but I was certainly, I like the idea and I certainly want to pursue it. But I don't know if we had this authority, but certainly.
I think it's a fair and honest question, what's happening in the town. Ask this person and ask other people, you know? Hire up then, whoever this person is, Kim. And there's always somebody higher up.
The other angle on this is, we don't know if it's the school's problem or not. We know the school has a problem, but where is this stuff coming from? We have no idea. Why is the Department of Health sticking with the school? Just because they found it in their well, doesn't mean it came from there. And so the Department of Health really should spread out and find out what the heck is going on.
The truth of the matter is, nobody knows really where it's coming from. Nobody knows if every well or only three wells are affected. And you can't expect the average household to spend $3,000 to test their well. And this is not something where, as Bill says, you don't go down and get a little bottle of water and take the test. They come in there with special suits on and, I mean, hazmat suits and they can't expose it to the air. And, I mean, this is a very complicated process.
Yeah, we understand. Let me just go back to my initial question for Al Sands as to why did the school pay for wells in the surrounding properties at the time of the building?
Al, did you hear that?
I think I did.
Why didn't the school?
If I understood it correctly, the question was, why did the school board not drill wells for neighboring properties?
No, why did they do that?
I guess I'm not, it's not a good connection. So tell me again, what's my question?
Go ahead, Denise.
The question was, some people believe that the school budget included building, putting in new wells for some of the butters at the 1988 construction of the new school.
Well, that was 30 years ago. I don't recall that there was wells drilled for other people. But I'd have to, before I swore to that, I'd have to look it up. All I remember was drilling a well for the school. We had issues with the well right from the get-go when it was drilled. And if you talk to Carrie, she'll expect you to finally figure out what the problem with the school well was. But I do not recall drilling any wells for neighboring, any of the neighboring properties.
Jesse wants to.
Yeah.
Did he have a?
No, he just had them.
Well, what, Alan, what we should do is, maybe when you get a moment, you can do a little research. And maybe we can do a little research from our point of view to see if we can, first learn if they actually did drill wells for the butters. And maybe we get an answer of why they did so.
So they drill well?
I don't understand why the school would have drilled wells for the other people.
Because it could compromise the water system for us.
Well, I agree with you. It sounds very strange.
Absolutely. Well, I think it was probably because of a new septic system going in and they feared that wells might contaminate. Like they did Jesse, since Jesse didn't have even a drill well then. We didn't even have an indoor plumbing. So I don't know what he did then.
I might have had something to do with it.
I think, well, I think, basically, we're all kind of guessing. I think we need to do a little research and find out why. First of all, if it happened, and then if it happened, why did it happen?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just want to remind people that when the school was built, that septic system that we are currently using was designed by engineers and approved by the state environmental people. As well, we had to delineate a location. If ever needed, a backup location was set aside. If we had to put in a second, you know, if the first system. If we had to put in a second, you know, if the first system failed, there was a location for a second one. So it isn't like it was done on a whim. It was all designed and approved before it was constructed. That part I do recall. I do not recall where we drilled any wells for anybody. But I could be wrong, say it was 30 years ago.
All right, why don't we do some research, Al? Maybe you can, you can, when you get back, you can dig up some notes or maybe you could talk to somebody and kind of recall what happened 30 years ago. And maybe we could do some research as well.
I would like to make a motion that the select board authorized Bill to do the, make arrangements that we test the water at the town hall. We test the water at the library. And we test the water at the town garage. That gives us a water sample of where our employees are and where the majority of the publics come to on town to do town business. That also gives us a sample of what's going on in the town away from the school. The health department is hanging their hat that the problem is on the, on the school, but we don't help that to do some other testing. If we do that testing and we find there's a problem bigger, then we have to make the plan after that.
Okay, do, do we have a second to that motion? Kathy will second it. Any other comment, Alan, about it, other than what you made?
No.
I, I happen to agree with you, by the way, that at least we know that, that the wells here are, are okay. And if we find that the town hall or the library contaminated, then maybe we have a larger issue than the school.
Exactly. And, you know, we, we can hang your hat on the being at the school and that may be correct, but until we test, there's, we don't know if there's a problem. Once we, if we know we have a bigger problem, we got to come up with a better plan.
I agree.
Would that cost $9,000 to run one?
The cost, according to KAS, is, is, is around 2,300 per. I think it's something like that. We would have to get bids from other people. KAS just happens to be the one that did Shastberry, who is having a problem with the PFAS because many of its residents worked at the plant in Bennington where this came from. And they brought supplies home to extra shields and stuff that were in the scrap heap. They brought them home to put roots on their sheds. And then they did, then they put them in the ground and now you know the story. So anyway, and they also have a big dump that has a lot of that stuff. So Shastberry got it.
Who paid for the testing of the surrounding, the surrounding properties from the school? Did the Department of Health pay for it?
I had no idea who paid for it. I'm guessing Department of Health. But again, we don't have any more information than anybody in this room has right here.
I'm just wondering if we could use the logic with the Department of Health that since they have already reached out beyond the school for the testing, that it might make sense for them, for us to request them to consider testing other properties either around the school, as Denise is suggesting, or the three properties that Al is suggesting, and at least try to get Department of Health to pay for this. It seems that they have already broadened their scope beyond the school for testing. And we might be able to argue that case with that.
Well, I, I was going to make that same basic statement that Suzanne just did, that we contact the public health, whoever the agency is, and explain to them what they have done. They've gone out of their way of the school and we would like to have other wells tested in the town on their dime rather than our dime and see what they do, what, what we can do rather than us spending. I agree that we should test the wells. But let's, let's see if we can't find somebody who can pay for it other than the town of Grafton. That would be my opinion.
And once this stuff gets in the river, then they'll all start talking about it.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's more of a danger than that, actually. The town of Cabot had a pollution problem in their town. And the federal government came in and mandated, and they had to put a water treatment plant in. And there was, the town had to pay whatever the state told them to. So we don't want to ever be in a position because if they came in and mandated it, then you wouldn't have the ability to go out and bid or have alternatives. You would have to do whatever they tell you to do. And it's, it's, that's sad, that's a sad thing. And I'm concerned, very concerned, that this might be just the tip of the iceberg. I hope not, but I think we need to find out somehow. Alan, you have a motion on the floor that Alan wants to... Do you want to, do you want to rephrase your motion or do you want to go forward with that we pay, that we just do the testing or that we find alternatives to pay for the testing?
I, I'd like to continue my motion that we will do it. If we can find that the health department will pay for it, that's, that's fine. It's be a transfer of funds, but I'd like to get things moving.
So, Bill, Alan, Kathy, do you have any, any comments?
Well, I can't see any point in what testing the water up here because it's a new well and it's already been tested and it's well away from there. I can see no point.
Keep, keep in mind, just because a water has been tested in the past, it was not...
I've drained flooded water for years.
...PFAs. This is a different test.
Yeah, it's a different test. I mean, I mean, everybody's well, when they drill it, is tested, but they, they don't test it for this. They test it for various other compounds. Well, if we don't have any discussion, let's, let's take a voice vote of, on Alan's motion that the town either pay for it or find somebody to pay for it to test the three wells. So Alan, may you...
Before, before you vote, just want to be sure. You're, you're making a motion that we're going to, we're going to test those three wells. If, we're going to test them. If it costs us the money, we're going to test them. But we're going to try to get the Department of Health to test them. But we're going to test them in any case. I want to know, be clear on the motion.
That's what now's motion is.
Okay.
Is that correct, Alan?
We'll test them. We'll pay for it if we have to, but if we can get the health department to pay for it, it's better yet.
There's another option that we have not explored. Where Stan and I have met with the state and the federal representatives for updating the sewer study. And that money is basically free unless you build a system, which is a long way off. Stan and I were wondering that if, once we meet with the two engineering companies, maybe we could test various wells in town with that money that's available to make sure that we don't have an issue.
Did you just say you and Stan were thinking about this? And a minute ago you told me you hadn't heard about this until you got it out?
This, this is a different story.
But you just said about testing people's wells.
I said, now that we have the situation where at the expense, maybe the, the, that can be part of the sewer study. And they could go out and test the wells and it would be funded by the federal government or the state. And you wouldn't have to pay for that money unless the town voted to continue either study, either the sewer or the water system. And that's a long way away. But it's, it's a way of getting perhaps, other than going to the state. Just another thought.
Joe?
Yeah.
We, we have a motion on the floor, shouldn't we?
Yeah, I will.
Vote on that first and then can have another discussion if you want.
Okay. So Cynthia, how do you vote?
No.
Kathy?
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion is passed. So Alan, we will, we will stop the process. Bill will contact the...
He'll have to go out and bid.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll find out whether or not there's any, any available money out there. We're meeting with, with, what, Stan and I are meeting with one of the engineers on the 13th, I think. I forget, the 10th or something, I think. Anyway, we'll pursue that with them to see how they feel about it or what. Because they did do testing back in 2001 and 2009, I think. So we'll see what happens. Yes?
Do you have any expectation that this sewer system, if it were to come to pass, would actually filter out the PFOAs?
We have, we have, there's no way, no. We're, we're so far from, you know, even if, even if we do these studies, by the time this gets done, we're talking four or five years out. And who knows what, what's going to be. The only thing we're interested in doing is to see whether the original studies that were paid for, one was paid for by, by the state, free money. And the other one was paid from the Ames Hold. But those studies were too long ago and they need to be updated. And the cost for each update is roughly about $4,500. But there might be other issues. There might be other ways to do it. And I'd like to, Stan and I would like to pick their brains to see what's available for, you know, studying the water. Because if we have a water issue, then you're going to have to deal with that. So somebody, we have to figure that out. And I don't know how you do that other than to test the wells. Because you have a potential issue right now.
I'd like to, before you adjourn this meeting, I'd like to go into executive session on the water issue.
Okay, fine, if, if the board agrees.
Well, at that time, at that time, you can make the motion.
Alan, do you want it? All right, okay. All right. Any more, any more discussion on the water testing? Public comment?
Do you have a comment? You have three places to test. And you said the town garage. Now, you said the town garage in the village or this town garage?
Here.
Yeah. Why would it be here? The reason is, is outside of the village. Basically, you know, perimeter.
Well, would you like to know if there's, if there's an issue? If there's an issue here, then there might be issues other places.
Well, by subversive, there's no issue here.
Exactly right. And the only way to know that is to test it.
Well, yeah, that's true. But I think that it should be closer to the village, closest to the epicenter before we go out this far.
Remember this is Bill, Bill Dump. Bill Dump is right outside.
To be noted, but the vote was done, so then that was, we pursue this. But you're right, and I forgot about that, but you had the old dump out there. Many years.
Three years.
So I know the old dump, that's something to do with it.
Nobody else, Dan? Any other public comment? New business? The next meeting is November 19th here at 6 o'clock. Need a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Second.
Second? Okay. Alan, are you a favor of that?
Yeah, that's a move, but you didn't hear me.
Okay, sorry. Okay. Well, thank you for coming.